Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. I would like to call this regular meeting of Lahana City Council to order. Today is November 6, 2023. The time is now 6:00 PM. If we could all rise for the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, let us remember that no matter who wins any position in any election, that you are always the supreme ruler in our lives. We ask you to watch over our city and the citizens who may be facing any financial hardships at this time. Please watch over those affected by tragedy this year, including battling an illness, loss of loved ones, and loss of property due to fires. Please watch over this council and clear their minds to make sound decisions for our city. Watch over the city employees. Keep them safe as they go about their days and nights and do their jobs to help our city be the best it can. Lastly, watch over our veterans and those currently serving in our armed forces in this month when we celebrate them. Let us also pray for them to find peace and comfort in their daily lives, as well as pray for the souls of those who gave all so that we may all enjoy the freedoms we have today. Let us move forward after this election as one community and show that having different opinions is okay, but at the end of the day, we will unite and move our city forward. We, as city council members, are public servants, and it is a great thing to serve our community and especially to serve our Lord. Matthew 23:11-12. "The greatest among you will be your servant; for those who exalt themselves will be humbled, and those who humble themselves will be exalted." Amen. If you stay standing for our pledge of allegiance, which Councilman Velasquez will do first?
My pledge to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochoa.
Here.
Vila.
Here.
Ventoya.
Here.
All right. We're going to start off with a proclamation. So if I can have Arkansas Valley Hospice come up to the front while I read this proclamation. Okay, I hope you guys are ready to stand for a while. This is a long proclamation. Whereas it is the mission of Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. to provide the quality mind, body, and spirit patient-centered care while supporting, serving, and educating our community about the end-of-life tribulations. Whereas the provision of the quality hospice and palliative care reaffirms the belief in the essential dignity of every person, regardless of age, health, social status, citizenship, race, or religion, and that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. attends to patients' emotional, spiritual, and family needs and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice has pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice, and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique care, needs, and wishes, increased quality of life for patients and family caregivers. Whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, and emotional-spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully up until the final moments, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. Whereas every year, individuals living with terminal and chronic illnesses, their family and loved ones, receive care from Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc.'s programs in the communities of Lahunta, Rocky Ford, Ballard, Manzanola, Swink, Fordway, Olney Springs, Crowley, Sugar City, Los Anamos, Arlington, Haswell, Charah, Hasty, Avondale, Boone, and Kim. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. is a nonprofit organization. Funding from donations from our community members support client care, which allows services to be provided at no charge for the client. Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. is the only local hospice where donations remain in our community. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. volunteers assist with the needs of those living with terminal and chronic illnesses and that of their family and loved ones. Whereas hospice and palliative care providers of the Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with the family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. I, Joseph Ayala, proclaim November 2023 as Hospice and Palliative Care Month. I call upon the citizens of Lahunta to join Arkansas Valley Hospice, to increase their understanding and awareness of hospice and palliative care, and to observe this month with the appropriate activities and programs. Thank you. Do you want to just come up and say a couple words? That'd be great.
You want to reread it?
No.
It was just a great topic. Well, first of all, we want to thank the council members and the community for the audience this time. We're grateful for standing before you and to raise the awareness about what hospice and palliative care is all about. You know, hospice is not a place where you go, but it's a lifestyle that we help folks get through. And we've been pretty good this year. We've had quite a few folks, but we can always stand to get a few more referrals. Just calls the office. Have you, Doc, give us a call, and we'll be right on top of it. You know, every year, about 1.8 million folks pass away with a chronic, long-term, terminal condition. And during that process, we want to be there for them. Not all 1.8. Don't think we'll make it. But we want to be there for them and educate them and inspire hope during those last days, if, in fact, they are their last days. Some of the folks, they graduate, we call it. They move on out and continue their life. So there's a lot of different ways that we can look at this. But we individually look at each patient, each family member, and provide excellent care regardless of their situation. So November, like you said, is our National Palliative and Hospice Month. We just finished celebrating our open house to the community. It was a nice festivity. It happened on Friday. I think there was a lot of things going on on Friday, so unfortunately, we didn't get a whole lot of turnout, but it was enough. There was a lot of folks there, and a lot of folks interested in donating and becoming a part of our program, which is really fantastic. So once again, I bring with me tonight Cassie Campos. She's our volunteer coordinator. And what she does is she brings folks into the facility looking to volunteer and help us out in any way they possibly can. We're always looking for volunteers. And she's also part of the marketing team. I also have Nita Wakefield. She's also marketing team, and she's one of our health aides or CNAs. And so both her and Cassie, they get to know the patient very up close and personal. So we want to just thank them for coming and being a part of this. I think that's it. I appreciate the time that you've given us. And if you can, if we have a little picture with you, that'd be great.
Sure. One, two. Okay, one more, just in case. One, two. Okay, and a half. Three.
Okay. Can I get one? One more? No, you're all right. You're always in the way. Even on the livestream.
I messed up.
I got it. I'm taking a picture of my finger.
I did, but I got the other one too.
Adrian would share.
Yes, absolutely. Minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Citizen participation for non-agenda items only. If you have something you'd like to share with the council, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes, which Mrs. Schofield will start for you as soon as you hit the mic. Alvin's getting up.
Just out of my way, I guess. Will you give me like a one-minute warning?
I will. I'll go with that.
That works for me. Okay, I am Kimberly Gaios. I live at 1421 Bradish Avenue. Okay, I wrote this out because you know how I wander. All right. Many city council meetings ago, I stated I would be back often. I had made it my personal goal to make sure I did everything I possibly could to educate our citizens about sales tax. Something that many may not understand is the state of our mental health at this point. And I can say that mine has pretty much been trashed. The strain of an unknown future has weighed heavy, but the election is finally here. And I, along with I know any city worker whose work is on the line, we're ready to move forward either way. So I'm very thankful that tomorrow is right around the corner. So I do want to address just a few things that I've heard on Facebook or seen at these city council meetings. And many who have spoken on Facebook or here have been spreading a lot of misinformation. I have to say thank you to all who have corrected, done effort in correcting that misinformation. But I'm asking you to please stop. We've got tomorrow until this decision is made. One of the things most recently was the option of volunteers running the places that are on the chopping block, the library, the golf course, the senior center, and the pool. Suggesting that any of these departments could be run by volunteers is absurd. Coming, let's see. If we, the comparison that was made was to the Grand Theater. And I have to say, the Grand Theater is run by volunteers, but when you compare any one of those places to those four on the chopping block, I have to say that that is like comparing apples to hot dogs. You're talking about two completely different things. There is no way to sustain any of those places by volunteers. And if any of you have ever been a part of a board or a committee or anything, you know that a lot of times it's the same few people that are on everything. And so let's say we even, we had 100 volunteers that would be willing. Which of the volunteers are going to pay the bills that come with maintaining the buildings? Those properties would still be owned by the city. So I don't know. Are they able to be rented? So who would pay the rent? Who would do the maintenance? Who would pay the utilities and so on? That's ridiculous. That, right now, we have all seen the numbers. $1.4 million. Where does that come from? Okay, and you could take off salaries. You're still in a place that you're not going to be able to pay that. Part of this response is in an answer to somebody that posted, like somebody who's gone as far as creating a logo that says "Vote No" on 2A. And it happened to be a friend of mine. And so anyway, some of this is in response, and it wasn't a back-and-forth war. I just wanted to say how I felt. I just said, I have to say that one of the hardest things through all of the time and effort to get people educated about the importance of sales tax and why we need this increase
One minute.
is to discover that people who I know love their community are still saying no to 2A. I'm so confused. Even as of today, we are still hearing words such as blackmail, scare tactics, and threats. There is no mystery to where this money is going. The budget has been presented to the community. It's all there. I'm still asking people, educate yourselves before you check that box. Whatever your decision is, please, check the box. Too costly, too risky? No, it's not. This decision will decide the future of Lahunta. I do want to give thanks to all the people on the 2A for LJ Committee who invested their time to educate our community. It's been amazing to be part of a team striving towards the best for Lahana's future. I am grateful to God. The one who holds my future does not have any political title. Therefore, I trust that he will place me where he sees fit to continue his good work. I pray for the future of Lahunta and that we will be united on making this a place where the next generation desires to invest their futures. May God cover this election. Good luck to you, Joe.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation?
John Garcia, live at 1406 Colorado Avenue. I was here about a year ago asking about the paving there in front of my house. It's about 33 feet wide, a good 60 feet long. You know, it seems to be the only area on Colorado that doesn't have a paving. Now, it's about six inches deep now. I have a problem getting in and out of my driveway. You know, I have a van, so when I go out, when I back out, it catches my bumper. When I back in, it'll catch my bumper. So it's turned on my car. Now, about a year ago, I was told there was no asphalt. Okay. Like I said, I was here about a year ago over this. Still there. I just want to know if and when it's going to get done or if it's not going to get done.
John, I apologize for that, young, but I'll make sure that that hits high on the street. You know, I know they're finishing up some hands on Carson because they repaved it. But while there's still asphalt, you know, I appreciate you coming in now instead of after Thanksgiving when we probably have not had no last one.
Right.
But let me get this on their agenda. And I do apologize because I remember you coming in.
Yeah, I just, okay.
And I don't have an excuse for you except I'm sorry.
That's all I want to know is if it's going to get done. And if not, then I can fill it in with something.
No, let me take care of that. We just got through doing one out here, too. We got them all over town, but let me make sure that becomes part of it.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I have.
Thank you.
Thanks for the follow-up.
Anyone else for citizen participation?
Hey, John. John. 1406.
1406 Colorado Avenue. That's about 60 feet long. About 3 feet wide. So it goes through driveway, past my driveway, and then, you know. Coming down. Coming down. I want to make sure I have that right. Thanks.
All right. Moving on to new business. Mr. Maloff is not here, so Mr. Klein.
Great. First one we have is a liquor license. Now, this is an application for a special events permit by American Legion Auxiliary Number 9. Angela Davis is the event manager. The event is their fifth annual Veterans Day Gala and to be held November 11 from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at 111 Steen Avenue.
Motion to accept the application for the special event for American Legion Auxiliary Number 9. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously.
Great. The second one we have is an application for a renewal of a beer and wine liquor license by Family Dollar Stores of Colorado, doing business as Family Dollar Number 25100 at 614 East First Street. And they've made all the clerk, all the supervisors have signed off on this, including the city attorney.
Great. Do I have a motion? Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously.
Great. The third one we have is an application of a renewal of a club liquor license by the BPOE Lodge 701, doing business as the Helms Lodge 701, 119 Colorado Avenue. And all the supervisors and the city attorney have signed off.
Do I have a motion? So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Klein.
Great. Next, what we have is we're on to the approval of the 2024 proposed budget. Now, there's three things that have to happen. There's a resolution, you know, that says, okay, this is what all the different funds, what the amounts is, that they'll be taking it in. Now, this doesn't have, if the sales tax passes, what the city council will do is they'll increase that on second reading. But right now, it does not have the 1% in it. So the first one, resolution, is a proposed budget for the city of Lahana for the year 2024. It's been prepared in accordance with the city of Lahanta's charter, city charter. The general fund, $8,514,100. Library endowment, $500. Internal services, $1,973,300. Employee benefit plan, $2,407,500. Economic development fund, $101,700. Property management fund, $1,348,000. Property tax tourism fund, $247,000. Electric fund, $12,206,700. Water fund, $3,818,700. Sewer fund, $3,503,900. Sanitation fund, $1,513,500. Movement violation surcharge fund, $600. Cemetery endowment fund, $10,300. And conservation trust fund, $391,000.
This is a first reading?
This is your first reading. And this is, young, your resolution will just come once. Then it goes to a second reading on the others.
Don't forget, utility board did pass their resolution.
Yes, and utility board did pass the resolution. Thank you.
Rick, do these need to be approved per number?
No, just resolution number R-15.
Each one separate?
23.
I'll make a motion. We pass resolution R-15-2023, fund budgets for 2024.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously.
All right. Now, let's get to the fun part. Okay. First reading of ordinance fixing the mill levy for assessment for evaluations for the year ending December 31, 2023, and fiscal year 2024. And what this is, is the total valuation, assessed valuation of city of Lahunta And for as long as I've been at the city, and I've been here 30-odd years, about 34 years, that we've always had the mill levy being 3.104. So it's still 3.104. That did not change.
Wasn't this an average of $120,000 a year?
Yeah, they came to $118,000 if you do the math.
Forgive me.
I did the math.
Thank you.
It's what I do.
Well, I know. Oh, wasn't off mudds.
No.
Do you have a motion? So I'll make a motion for ordinance number 1656, fixing the mill levy for assessment evaluations for the year ending December 31, 2023 to reflect fiscal year 2024. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Klein.
Okay. Ordinance number 1657. Now, this is our annual appropriation ordinance, and it's appropriating sums of money due to expenses and liabilities of the city of Lahunta for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending on December 31, 2024. Now, what this says is that, okay, we're going to take in through various sources for the general fund, $8,514,100. And we got to use that to pay our bills. That's what that says. It just says you cannot use this money for any of the other funds or anything. This is for the general fund.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1657.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is this a first reading, Rick?
Yes, sir.
So we got another reading?
Yes, sir.
One of them is not a second reading. I don't know which one. One of them is a resolution and not an ordinance?
No, the resolution, again, these are both ordinances. They'll both come.
Okay, then the ordinance, the ordinance is two reading?
Yep. They both got.
Okay. And so the one that was a resolution to a pass will be re-presented to you to override what you have approved today. So either way, you either won't have another reading on it because it didn't pass. Or if it does pass, you'll have another reading to correct everything to what the two places.
There'll be additions to it if it passes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it'll be the yellow pages in the budget book, and you will be emailed because this is, whatever happens with the election, this will be your unfinished business at the next meeting.
The four activities that were proposed for closure?
This, yes. You'll see a change in all of that.
Any other discussion? So is this ordinance clear or it's first reading?
Yes. This is first reading. Both of them are first reading. Ordinance is going to apply.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Klein, I know that Mr. Maloff did talk to you about this. Please put your mic on.
Yeah, this is the authorization to commence condemnation at 1220 Rice Avenue. And we're asking you to table this because Mr. and Mrs. Viceroi, we've been working with them, and they comply. So, you know, it kind of comes off the table when they comply. And, you know, before the meeting, I personally thanked them for their efforts and stuff and working with us. So I'd like a favorable to table this authorization to commence condemnation, please.
What motion to table?
What's the address? 1220 Rice.
Do you want a motion to table?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Committee and board reports. Any committee and board reports?
Just those things of note for the senior center that on the November 16 at noon, they'll be having their Thanksgiving meal. It's $5. You have to reserve your meal. You don't have to make a reservation, but you have to reserve your meal, and the cost is $5. They stress that there will be no to-go boxes, so you have to eat your meal there. So that's probably the most important thing to note for the senior center this time.
Utility board?
Oh, the utility board.
And what day was that, Paul? November 16? 16?
Yes, it's November 16, senior.
Thank you.
I don't know where my notes are for the utility board.
Well, it was online, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They can watch it. Any other committee and board reports? Mr. Klein, city manager comments.
All right. Yeah, well, it was a busy weekend out there this weekend. We, Saturday night, we had two power poles hit, one up on Cactus, one at 6th and 350. Boy, just they were gunning for them. I don't know. And we did have a fire at the Halloween shop. I don't know if you guys caught that, but that's a sad deal. But, you know, I've got some great news. But, you know, I got some great news. EPA's came to town. You know, they said they don't be here. I went out about three-thirty. I didn't find them. But the guy did this morning, said that they were moving from the mountains coming over, and they should be here today. So, you know, they probably showed up during this meeting. They'll start on the fifteen twenty-five Lewis Avenue as far as the demo. And they'll start hitting the ones on the east side first. They're kind of worried about the wind, so they may have to take a pause if we get a lot of wind. But they'll be taking down six different structures, and that's a great one. The Brick and Tow Trail, they started placing concrete between Fourth and Fifth. They've all made it all the way in behind the valley plumbing. And now they've switched over, and they'll be working from Fifth up to Eighth Street. And once they get that section done, you'll see them put the butt mints in for the two bridges. The bridges will come in by January first. This project is slated to be finished completely by February first. So it's a long time coming. Started on that project nineteen ninety-seven. Yeah, weeds, 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 guys. One more time, please. Once we get them this time, then we'll look good. But please, get your weeds out.
Question on that, Rick?
Yes, sir.
That bridge on Third and next to Alasteca, what it used to be?
Uh-huh.
Is that going to be replaced also?
You know, Ed, that bridge is actually hitting in nineteen thirty-one it was built. So the state is coming through. Was supposed to be here this last Wednesday, but they got balled up. But they're doing their bridge inspections. And right now, that bridge isn't eligible. But they said probably within the next ten years. And they're worried about this time, whether it'll be, and if it is, there's money out there to help replace it. So, you know, but you're actually picking the first bridge that needs to be replaced. Third and on Anderson Avenue.
Pretty critical?
We will be finding out from their consultant probably within the next two months. Because it'll take about two months to do the report.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm really interested in all that, myself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hate to have it mess up with whatever progress we make on that brick and tile part.
Me too.
Trail.
Me too. So we're working with the consultants on federal funding. We've turned in our one application. We'll wait and see what the feds give us with the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act money. We've reconstructed Carson between First and Fifth. Now, the water department raised their valves. They're pouring the pan. They poured the E, the one on the west side today on Fourth Street. Now, they put some fines down on the ones on Second Street and got the road open back up until we could get down there and get that tore out and pans poured in and asphalted. Now, the fire department, they did send some personnel to that St. Charles Fire, which is a mutual aid project. They will reimburse this for labor, and everybody's back. And I think that'd be good. The senior center, you know, you want some classes. They got bird watching, Chinese food cooking classes, live storybook time. Get on down there. And we have installed cameras at Brick and Tow Park, so, yep. And I know the football is going to be tomorrow, is last day. They were going to have it Saturday, but we did not have enough reps. So they had to postpone it until today.
I thought Brock was back there and sees him laying down.
He was, but he was on the, he was on his.
Will the cameras, will the cameras at the Brick and Tow Park go all the way down the trail?
Uh, no, just right around the parkway. If we need to add some down the trail, we will be adding them, yeah. But I do not have right now.
I actually got a question from online, and I'm not going to make the habit of doing this, but this one's pretty good. It says, with the demolition projects going on, have they contacted the neighbors before commencement of the demolition?
Joe, I do not know whether they have put out their notices yet or not. Now, the one that they're only working on at fifteen twenty-five, that's in an open area. Because, you know, sits back off into that bowl. But I will check that, make sure.
Any other questions for Rick?
Fifteen twenty-five, what?
Lewis. I can tell you who used to live there when I was a kid.
Is that near the other ones we tore down?
Uh, yeah, you know, the two that we did back-to-back on Lewis and Edson? Okay, just on Lewis, just straight up that road. Is that like a blueish little house that all the gang members have been using for years?
Or the Sheriffs?
No, it has Serrano gang members.
Oh, gross.
Yeah, that's where it's located.
I think Serrano's a chili, so I don't know if that's right.
But is this Serrano?
Serrano?
Yeah, I don't know.
Rick, how many grants did you have to apply for before you got that trail grant?
Four, and I can think of off the top of my head until we got the money.
I was just asking because a lot of people ask about the tennis courts, and we've already applied twice.
Three times on tennis courts.
So it takes, sometimes, sometimes you just got to keep applying and applying.
Different sources? You never know. Man, you get it until, keep going until it sticks.
Because I knew you had played twice. I didn't realize it was four.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, governing body comments?
Oh, sir. Oh, go ahead. First thing, Chamber of Commerce is holding the Veterans Day Ceremony at the line of intermediate, ten o'clock, November ninth, for those who want to attend. Another thing, last week I attended a session at Clean Valley Recycling. Elizabeth Chapman, who's the executive director for Recycle Colorado, was there. Recycle Colorado is a five oh one, C three nonprofit, who is there to promote the advancement of circular economies and improving recycling in the state of Colorado. Their goal is to push Colorado to above fifty percent in recycling. Right now, Colorado is at a fifteen percent.
Fifteen?
Fifteen percent recycling rate. So with that, she was there to talk about House Bill twenty-two thirteen fifty-five, which is a producer responsibility deal. What it does is it pushes the producers like Frito Lay and Coca-Cola to put money to recycling, basically. They're responsible for the end life of their packaging now. Colorado, several other states have done this. Coca-Cola, Lever, companies like that have actually put a bunch of money together to aid in this. They've made some pledges within their own companies to do better, have packaging at a seventy percent recycled packaging. So seventy percent of their packaging would be recycled materials. So this bill is basically pushing that onto those manufacturers. In the end, what's going to happen is Coca-Cola for a bottle may pay one hundredth of a cent to a fund. And those funds and those monies will come back to the state of Colorado, and not actually to the state, but to a nonprofit entity that is in charge of dispersing that money. And that money will go to do things like fund Clean Valley Recycling, which in the end will make recycling free for everybody in Colorado. And that's stated to start in twenty twenty-six. So it's a really, really good thing. Could help Clean Valley Recycling advance their program there, have a better facility. But these companies like Coca-Cola have realized what's going on, and they need to do their part in this. But in order to do their part, we have to recycle materials. So like I said, the end goal is to make recycling free. That is going to happen in twenty twenty-six for Colorado. So everybody out there, one of the biggest complaints has been the cost of recycling. I'm doing something good. Why am I having to pay for it? Well, you know, somebody's got to do all the legwork when it comes to recycling. But this will pay for that, so it'll allow it to be free to everyone in Colorado. So it's a really good thing, so everybody recycle, so. Go ahead.
In twenty twenty-four, the utility bills will focus strictly on what is recyclable. We'll be doing four or five different inserts regarding paper, plastic, cardboard, metals. So if you're not sure how to recycle or what is recyclable, hopefully, these flyers will educate and allow more people to know what is and is not recyclable.
On that note, also, some of the money that is gathered from this program will actually go to education. It'll be at a state level, at a local level, and may even be into the schools and stuff, so.
Yeah, I'm working with the, we're at Clean Valley, but I want to mention watching utility bills because we're really pushing on how to recycle. You know, I mean, we tell people to recycle, but have you ever told them what is recyclable? And I think that's also important, that people understand the full extent of what is and is not recyclable. And so we're going to push that in twenty twenty-four, which will go right alongside your twenty-five and twenty-six.
And another thing on this is that Coca-Cola bottles are already recyclable. Frito Lay packaging is not recyclable. So the way this money thing for them will work out is, you know, they'll actually charge Frito Lay more for their packaging because it's not recyclable. So hopefully, in the end, it pushes those companies to produce packaging that is recyclable. And, I mean, that's a really, really good thing. And like I said, the education thing will be there. And it's, I just, it's just a positive thing, a good thing for Colorado. We're trying to be one of the leaders in this thing, so very good thing, so.
Did you say that was a state legislation or no?
Yeah, it was a House bill that was passed in twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Thank you, Damon. Any other governing body comments?
Yeah, I do. Just a quick correction. Received a message from Bobby Raines, a fellow senior senator advisory member. There will be to-go boxes for the Thanksgiving meal at the senior center.
I know.
Thank you, Bobby.
And then I just wanted to say again about the Lahana Chamber of Commerce Veterans Day Ceremony that they're having. I hadn't gotten in touch with any of you. If you could let me know if any of you could attend. It's at ten AM on Thursday. After the meeting. Thank you.
You have more, Paul?
Yes, just with the deepest respect and gratitude, I'd like to thank all the veterans for their service. And to my fellow Marines, two hundred and forty-eight birthdays coming up, so happy birthday, and Semper Fidels to the Marine Corps. Thank you to the city crew for working on the water break in an expeditious manner at thirteen hundred block of Braddish. And to all the entities that hosted an afternoon of trick-or-treating in Lahana. I thought that was pretty cool. It went all afternoon and into the evening. And that's just a safe way for us to go out there and enjoy Halloween. So thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Paul. Any other governing body comments?
Concerning the election, I had about fifty yard signs to put out across town for my candidacy, and within eight days, I have nine left. Forty-one of them disappeared within eight days. If you're doing it, please don't take mine. Or if you have them, return them. I'll take them back. Thank you.
Any other governing body comments? Okay, I don't want to keep you guys here too long, but I have a pretty lengthy governing body comment. So on what may be my final governing body comment, I want to say a few things. First of all, Betty asked me about this earlier. I did attend the first ever, to my knowledge, panel set up between a small group of mayors throughout our state of Colorado. Our two large populations, Denver and Colorado Springs. The mayor of Grand Junction was representing the western side of the state. And then myself was representing Lahana and the eastern side of the state. It was a great discussion on what we can do to work together where we can and how we can unify and help bridge the urban rural divide. The other big thing is that we have elections like we're about to have tomorrow. And there's different people that come in and out in these elections. So we want to build something that's going to be there no matter who the mayor is at any certain time. We want this group to always be working together no matter who the mayor is. So whatever happens and whatever we get set up, if it's not me, I will make sure that I share those contacts with whoever comes in to do that so that this goes forward. We don't want to have any more than ten mayors in this group. Because if you get too many mayors, then it's just too much going on. You're not getting anything done. It's not productive. So we're working towards getting that official and getting that organized. A big thanks to Phil Weiser, Ryan Heckman, who does Civico in Colorado. This is going to be a very big thing going forward. And I hope that there's a lot of, a lot of impact that happens in rural areas because of the work we're going to do with this. Okay, so now for some thoughts on this election. While I appreciate the First Amendment and that all that comes with it, I would like to say that we are playing a bit of a dangerous game when it comes to the future of Lahana City Council and other board positions. When we say certain things about people running for office, it could be very dangerous. When I ran two years ago, I didn't agree with the direction that the mayor then was steering our city. I didn't like the way we did certain things. There were things I felt we needed our city manager to do differently. But I never once attacked them personally. I never once called them names or said things that would imply that they were in danger of losing their jobs. This time, I have not even once mentioned my fellow candidates running for this office. I think it's important to be honorable when you run for public office. Just because you can say something doesn't mean that you should say something. Okay? Let's stick to the issues. We can disagree on the issues, but let's stick to the issues. Let us be truthful in what we say, because there are people who look to us and believe us when we say things. So if we're not being truthful, we're giving them bad information. That's not right. Let them vote with the right information, not vote information we feel is important. The reason I say this is because I get asked all the time, why don't young, why don't more young people get involved? It's because they don't want to get attacked like this. They don't want to be, you know, put up on the stake. And Mr. Maloff isn't here tonight because we've had discussions over and over about this. He says, as a public figure, that's part of the game. And I can see that. But when you have people that don't run for office in the future, it's because of stuff like that's happening in this election. Okay, so when we have open board seats, it's because we're doing stuff like this. So I'm asking if you have anything to say, keep it about the issues. Keep it about where we can agree or where we can disagree. But let's not just go off the rails. To do an interview and say false things about our council and our employees and claim we're a bunch of criminals, arsonists, embezzlers, running an escort service without any evidence to back those claims is a horrible thing to do, and it's dangerous. Because then it makes it harder for this council going forward to gain the trust of the people. Can you do it? Sure you can, but should you? No. There is no conspiracy against any council member up here. I can tell you for a fact that we are all very busy. The last thing we want to do is say, you know what would be great? Is if we had to take time and resources away from our city business to deal with local news from here to Colorado Springs, asking us questions that we shouldn't be answering because we should be focused on doing the business of the city. Okay? So to say that that's something we strove to do and wanted to do is just absolutely ridiculous. These aren't, these aren't government elections. Make sure that you keep that in mind when running a campaign in future elections. This is a place where we see each other at grocery stores, at sporting events, at arts, and all these different things in the community. We can't be saying these things about one another. You don't have to tear someone else down to build yourself up. Lastly, I want to thank the people who made these last two years a great experience for me. First of all, obviously, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, my church, Our Lady of Waterloo, Saint Patrick, Father Joseph, and all the members who pray for me and let me know they're thinking of me and my family. All of our faith community for their prayers, and especially Matt Witt and M.J. Romano for doing our invocations for our councils during the last two years. I want to thank Nancy Bennett, Cynthia Neve, and the Urban Renewal Board. John Yergert, Pam Benahi, Ron Davis, and the Tourism Board. Frank McKenzie, Mike Borje, Gary Cranston, and the Utility Board. And all the city employees, especially. and all the city employees, especially Chief Quick, Deputy Chief Copley, Fire Chief Brad Davidson. Thank you for doing your best in keeping this community safe. Also, I'd like to thank Brock Kinkhaus, Don Block, Elisa Libby, Deb Fraker, Melanie Schofield, Paula Mahoney, for always keeping me informed and on track and reminding me of certain things. My assistant, Medea, for making sure I can keep my work and mayor schedule straight. Bill Jackson, whenever I need something or a question answered, you have always been there, available to me, and I thank you for that. Phil Maloff, you are amazing at what you do, and we are lucky to have you. I can always count on you to give me your honest opinion, even if I don't want to hear it at the time. I very much appreciate it. Rick Klein, your love for La Jolla is unmatched, and it has been great to work alongside you through council and the work you do with Action Twenty-Two. That work will bring more rural voices to the forefront for years to come. You are the ultimate connector. The city council, you all do a wonderful job, and always remember to communicate with your wards. You represent and serve them to the best of your ability. Special thanks to Shandra and Lisa, two of my most trusted allies. I appreciate all your hard work for your community through two A, and always making sure that certain allegations have a response, and for encouraging me when I need it most. Mayor Pro Tim Velazquez, I know if I ever need to be away for city business, it will be handled properly and carefully. Thank you for always doing that. Former Mayor Don Rizzuto, your knowledge and expertise is always welcomed. And then I have some special people that aren't here physically, but have ended up being a big part of La Jolla. My grandparents, Joe and Virginia Ayala, who decided to raise their family here in La Jolla. My grandmother was a homemaker, raising nine kids and cleaning homes when she could. My grandfather had to leave school in the fifth grade to work to help his family. He later returned to school, getting his GED through Otero and going on to work for CBS until his retirement. I thank them because two of their grandkids have now served this city, with a third running for award seat tomorrow. Michael Moreno was a Ward Three city councilman. I am currently the mayor. And Zika Yala is running for Ward Three in tomorrow's election. So I'd like to thank them and my family, especially my mom for always supporting me, telling me not to read Facebook. My amazing wife and daughters, who are always in my corner and who are the reason I volunteer and the reason I keep going. And lastly, the citizens of La Jolla. It has been an absolute honor to be your mayor for the last two years. I'm extremely grateful, and I always will remember this. Thank you. And with that, I agree with you.
For your La Jolla City Council, with your southeast Colorado news, I'm Adrian Hunt. Join us tomorrow for election coverage.
I'm sure we appreciate that I can try to pass.
Me too.
I was getting to it too.